I would like to call to order the October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. Welcome, everyone. It's good to have you all with us tonight. If you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If you would please join me in a moment of silence for our invocation tonight. Thank you. Okay. Before we get started tonight, I would like to welcome our youth commissioner that's up here with us tonight, Adir Kamdar from Concord High School. Welcomes. Good to have you with us. Great. I see you got a round of applause. None of the commissioners get that, so you should feel special, for sure. First up is the approval or correction of the minutes of our last meeting. You all have copies of those before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next up is the approval of the agenda. You also have a copy of that before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to recognitions and presentation. First up from Planning Department is Weatherization Day, two thousand twenty-three, and we are happy to have Robert Anderson with us to present that proclamation. Welcome.
Good evening, commissioners. Proclamation of Weatherization Day, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas October is National Energy Awareness Month, and October thirtieth is designated as National Weatherization Day, and whereas the county of Cabarrus has a longstanding commitment to conserve its resources and to help low-income households through its weatherization assistance program, and whereas the state of North Carolina has administered the weatherization assistance program since its inception in nineteen seventy-six, providing a variety of state and federal resources through numerous community action agencies, housing authorities, and departments of local government that serve people in every county and the state, and whereas it is important to recognize the importance of those programs that ensure that all residents, especially those living at or below the federal poverty line, have the opportunity to live in energy-efficient, healthy, safe, and comfortable homes as provided for by the weatherization assistance program. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, as Weatherization Day in the county of Cabarrus, and I urge all citizens to join me in this observance, adopted the sixteenth day of October, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Robert. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. Do I hear a motion that we adopt it as presented? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion's passed. Thank you very much. Okay, next up from Veteran Services, Operation Green Light proclamation, and we're happy to have Tony Miller with us to present that item.
Good evening, everyone. Supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Whereas the residents of Cabarrus County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all men and women who have selfishly served our community, our country, and its community in the Armed Forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the Armed Forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas Cabarrus County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and the functioning as county veteran service officers in twenty-nine states to help fellow former service members access more than fifty-two billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year, whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually, and whereas an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future, and whereas studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service, and whereas the National Association of Counties encourage all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans, and whereas the Cabarrus County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted, therefore be it proclaimed with designation Cabarrus County as a Green Light for Veterans County. To salute and honor this service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service, therefore be it further. Proclaimed in the observance of Operation Green Light, Cabarrus County encourages its citizens and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom for displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November the sixth through November the twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, adopted the sixteenth day of October, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. Do I hear a motion to adopt it as presented? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I will mention that we did participate in this effort last year, that week of November sixth through the twelfth this year. It was a little different last year, but we did have a number of people that did observe that. There were green light bulbs available. I think Lowe's maybe and Home Depot had those, and of course now with the number of LED color-changing lights that you can choose what color, it's a lot easier for folks, so I would love to see Cabarrus County glowing green all over. And so hopefully folks that hear this tonight and folks that might be watching this online or on television will hear us as well, so I hope we can really ramp up that participation this year. I know I lit my house green last year, and so hopefully we set a good example and some other people will participate. Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And Tony has our next item as well, our Veterans Day proclamation.
Proclamation, Veterans Day, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas America was founded on the principles of liberty, opportunity, and justice for all, and whereas America has called on her men and women in uniform to protect our nation, excuse me, our national security, to preserve our rights and the freedoms, and to keep our democracy safe, and whereas throughout their steadfast defense of America's ideals of our service members have ensured our country stands strong, our founding principles still shine, and nations around the world know the blessings of freedom, and whereas on Veterans Day, November eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, we recognize the men and women of our Armed Forces for valiantly defend these values throughout our nation's history, and whereas we also remember and pay tribute to the American Armed Forces whose courages and sacrifices secures our freedom, keeps the peace, and defends our values around the world. Now therefore, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim November the eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, as National Veterans Day, and call upon our citizens to always remember and honor our veterans and those who continue to serve this country so willingly to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy for all, adopted the sixteenth day of October, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. Commissioners, do I hear a motion to adopt the Veterans Day proclamation as presented? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you very much for both of those proclamations.
Yes, sir, and I'd also like to invite everyone to our annual Cabarrus County Veteran Services and Boys and Club Veterans Day program, which will be held this year on Saturday, November the eleventh, at eleven o'clock. Again, that's at the Boys and Girls Club. And we also have a date set for our Veterans Christmas breakfast, which will be Wednesday, December the thirteenth this year as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I have attended that ceremony at the Boys and Girls Club, and they do a great job with it, so looking forward to that. Okay, next on our agenda are informal public comments. I will quickly read a summary of our policy on public participation through informal public comments. The board has adopted a public participation policy that provides reasonable rules on how the public can have their voice heard by their leaders. Under the policy, the board welcomes all viewpoints, however speakers should be respectful and observe proper decorum. Speakers are free to discuss substantive concerns of public interest, but irrelevant personal insults and attacks are not allowed. Please do not identify minors without permission from their parents. Speakers register with the clerk by filling out the yellow card before speaking, and speakers have up to three minutes to speak. I have a number of cards that have been presented tonight. We try to number those in the order in which they are brought up to the front. Our first card is from Jerry Anderson. If you would state your name and address when you come to the podium.
Jerry Anderson, Kannapolis, North Carolina. I come before you tonight. I was reading this here, and you said that DSS in North Carolina, after reviewing relative federal and state laws, we confirm that the VA's determination, what they determine here, has no bearing on our DSS. That's what you told me. So you're telling me federal government stuff is garbage? This is garbage? What they told me my daughter was mentally handicapped with a lot of mental disabilities. Didn't want to believe it. It says evidence statements supported and claimed by the Social Security Commission. Not only was it VA. Also, when y'all, when I come up here and ask for help for my daughter, and I ask for a schizoid shot, they got her. So regardless of what information, they knew that she had a disability. But you know what? They put her in the wrong department, and they didn't follow up on her, which is misabuse on a mental person, not getting what I asked for help. They put her in the wrong department, and they went after the child because Jessica's was in the children's department. Anyway, y'all know schizophrenic is a chronic and severe mental disorder that causes people to interpret reality abnormally. She had that. She was dying, and y'all made her stand trial? Y'all rushed through this adoption, didn't offer to the family. Y'all wanted this child, and you used her mental to take the child. Y'all didn't give my daughter any treatment. Y'all denied her that treatment, and I didn't know she was in the wrong department. When I went back up after they said Jade is fine up there, I went up to that department, and they lied and said Jessica was there. I thought it was the department I needed to go to, and they started another from a lie, saying she was up there, and then they lied and said that she was in a cage at my house on a Saturday and needed taken. When they got there, she was under the cover watching Disney. Immediate taking, emergency taking, nobody charged. Anyway, y'all put my daughter on trial three times, and I asked Mr. Shu one time. I said, what can I do about this? He said, just keep doing what you're doing. Anyway, I'm gonna get real fast. He said he's gonna ask Kristy Wilhelm if she knew my child was mental or not, and he just got through saying, I asked him a year ago. I said, aren't you curious? And he says, wonder if she tells me she can't answer that. I said, we got a problem. If y'all took a child from a mental, we got a problem. If she didn't know it, Jay White didn't tell. Jay White didn't tell she had three.
Okay, our next card is from Jeter Anderson.
Is this mic working? This mic's not even working.
I think it's working.
It's not working good. Anyway, I too am coming up here to talk about the swindling of Jade Sue Anderson. And I played the video last board meeting, saying, taking your daughter? Sure am. So they took the daughter from my dad, thinking they took it from my mentally ill sister, but they really took her from my dad. Now they don't want to answer questions, and they want to exploit my father and abuse my father. And Mike Downs needs to open his door and quit abusing my father and exploiting him. You know, to take a child, and I got evidence that she took it from him, man. You just swindled that child away, and to take her on a Saturday night, nobody arrested. I think, do we have an old DSS lawyer in the house? What's the reasons you can have a child removed in North Carolina? Well, I think there's three or four reasons, but for an emergency reason, something's going on right there. And I didn't get no due process. Whatever I did to that child, I done to that child, and I'm, no due process. I get to go to court if I'm a child molester or a child abuser. Y'all didn't charge nobody, but y'all had to take that child, and she never seen her family again. And this poor girl, man, just, I got a hole in the side of me. Are y'all sad about what happened to Israel? Same thing happened to my house. They come in, took, killed, hurt, abused, and they still doing it. They still exploiting my dad, and I'm aggravated. Somebody needs to be a leader up here and nip this in the bud. Nip it in the bud. Ask Kristy Wilhelm, did you know that you was trying to help this child? Well, did you? This poor child, forget me having the big hole in my gut. This poor child, forget the abuse she put Erica through, she's dead now. What about this poor child today? We don't know what's going on with her. We just had an organization called DSS come in and take that child and never heard anything about her again. Never heard. This guy shuts his door. We know he hates people. We heard he hates people. This is a hate crime on a veteran. He hates veterans. Green light? That's all bull. Green light in Cabarrus County? Look how they're doing this veteran. Look how they did his family. They killed his daughter. And I'm sitting up here years later telling y'all about it. We need a leader. He needs to be ejected. He needs to be ejected from his power tonight. He shouldn't go home with power tonight in Cabarrus County doing this to somebody. It should be looked into to the fullest. God bless.
Okay, our next card is from Tristan Deal.
Well, a fun night already. Well, I am here to share my support for Kenny's decision to publicly become an unregistered or unaffiliated voter. I think that, as Bobby Kennedy said just two weeks ago, it is time that we declare independence from party politics, from hatred, from division, and it's time that we start trying to make the country better. I made that decision just a few months ago, or a year almost now, after the county convention for the GOP happened and was canceled, rescheduled, and then we had it again. I arrived, I saw adults acting like utter children, and I ran the North Carolina Association of Student Councils here in Cabarrus County, and none of our children ever acted as bad as those adults did. And upon the election of the new chair, they voted, or they jumped and they shouted as if they had just saved the falling empire that America is today. It's time that we start acting like adults. It's time that we start getting to the people's business. It's time that we start playing, it is time that we stop playing party politics. And in closing, I would just like to say that Jesus Christ's blood is the only thing that can cleanse people from their sins, and I believe that we are getting closer and closer to the time of his return, and it's time to start making that deal with God. Make it personal, have that relationship, and get it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next card is from Mark Ortiz.
Mark Ortiz from Kannapolis. Interesting segue here. I went and saw Mr. Kennedy last Saturday night in Charlotte, and he spent about the first sixty percent of his speech talking about the housing crisis, and I learned a little bit. I found out that three years ago, the median home price in the United States was two hundred fifty thousand dollars. This year, it's up to four hundred thousand. So this is a nationwide problem, and it's big, and it's the single largest driver of homelessness and evictions. He talked about an author that has recently had his work corroborated by a study at UC San Francisco, which found that contrary to what a lot of people say, most of the people homeless on the streets of San Francisco are from San Francisco. It's not other states sending them there. But the thing that correlates the most with homelessness is not drug addiction, although it's everywhere. It's not mental illness. Turns out homelessness actually is as much a cause of mental illness in the homeless as an effect of it. Turns out the single biggest thing that correlates with homelessness is housing cost. In San Francisco, median home price is eight hundred thousand. And so, that said, I want to commend you guys for funding the crisis assistance program. And I understand that it's on the agenda. I don't know what kind of presentation you're going to get, but the numbers clearly show that was in the attachment to the agenda, that the program is being used now. There's about thirty thousand dollars that got paid out the first quarter. People are using it, so it's a drop in the bucket, but it's a way bigger and better drop than what we had before. I wanted to commend you gentlemen for funding that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next card is from Josh Norris.
Much like Tristan, I'm rising in support of young Kenny, QAnon Kenny, I'll tell you what. Oh, Kenny Q. Good dude, good man, but as far as the Republican Party is concerned, your values and your platform, I agree with for the most part, and I don't agree with everything that Kenny's done. I saw that man sit here and vote to give tax breaks to a private company. I don't agree with that, but he's a good guy, right? I think he's just following the decisions that his heart is making for him. But the Republican Party, you missed your chance. You missed a golden opportunity. I am old enough to remember when Brian, you lost your bid for representative, and they were cheering, saying, the veto is saved. Oh my, the veto is saved. And look at us now. The Democrat Party themselves exiled those same representatives that have now reversed that veto being saved, right? And what do we think we're doing to Kenny? We had a chance to reach out and say with some sort of understanding, hey bud, we know you're leaving. That's a decision that you've made. What can we do? What are your concerns? How do we work together with you to get you back on our side? Not that he's even against you now. He's still gonna, I mean, it's not like he's flipping around Communist Kenny, right? He's still Q, baby. We doing it, right? But you just have to reach across and make the public realize that you are here to work together, not against. It's not overly difficult, and the same people who came out and supported him on a Monday was saying good riddance to him on a Tuesday. How does that work? You can't just flip the script so quickly. It makes you seem disingenuous, and when other folks come along, they don't know if they can then trust you when you say things like, hey, man, we're gonna support you, we're gonna endorse you, here we go. And everybody likes to throw across the assertion that nobody here is a real Republican. Oh, we're all, you're all just a bunch of rhinos and so on and so forth. And I'm sad to say, I don't think that the party itself even knows what a true Republican is anymore, when those conservative values, we got fake investigations that we're paying for? What's conservative about that? What are we doing? How much money is Mr. Wise gonna give back to the people for this crazy investigation? And again, on the flip side, should Steve be found guilty of something, how much money will you give back to the people, right? But that's all I got. God bless y'all. Be good, make good decisions.
Thank you. Our next card is from Megan Mack.
My name is Megan Mack, and I am a resident of Cabarrus County and a member of Down Home NC, a statewide community organizing group that has a chapter here locally. Over the last year or so, as Down Home has provided me a way to engage in local issues, to push for the needs that I see in this community, I've been confused, angry, suspicious, but also hopeful and grateful. Frequently, as it seems is often the case, with public comment, it has been the negative that has spurred my choosing to speak to you all here. Today, I'm here instead to relay my gratitude to the commissioners, the city manager, and to all of the other staff that's worked behind the scenes to ensure that the issues that have been brought to your attention are acknowledged and have been brought to your attention are acknowledged and looked into. Earlier in the year, we spoke about the eviction crisis happening in Cabarrus County and various shortcomings in the fund that was available to meet this need. You heard our points, you investigated the issues, and then proceeded to make changes to be more aligned with the needs of the community. Further, you committed to request a quarterly update on the Crisis Financial Assistance Fund. Today, this item is on your agenda, and for this, I thank you. More recently, it was brought to your attention that there is a need for effort to be devoted to promoting the health of our local boards and committees. These local governing boards contribute to ensuring that our community is strong and healthy. Today, there are items aligned with this need on the agenda, and for this, I thank you as well. Rest assured, I'll likely be up here again in the future talking about things that I think might need to be changed and suggest a different way of doing things. But I'm here today to express my appreciation and my gratitude for the way that you have responded over these last several months, whether that is here in your meetings, at your work sessions, by promptly responding to emails, or for taking the time to meet with us and to discuss the issues that we see in our community. And for that, I thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next card is from Bishop Roland Jordan.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Down, Ms. Kelly, attorney, clergy, and community. I greet you in Jesus's name. This is still a hate season, praise God. And I experienced a lot of hate season, but I get on to what I got to get done. Next year, let's look for Columbia Day. That's when I'll discover America. Really, I say the Indians, but we need a proclamation for that. Thank God we still got Veteran Day, praise God, as well as we look for your help on our bridge down on Lincoln and Ruffel. You can put input there because of emergency, we need our bridge open there. Very important. And social service. Okay, I'm going out to some jobs because God gonna give me the power to do it, especially Ms. Keisha, your new black director. I know you think I'm president, but I'm not. Anybody don't like Jesus Christ, I don't like you, but I don't hate you, because I was the person that wasn't saved. But I can save anybody that wanna be saved. You gotta be willing to be saved. But you're not my friend if you don't believe in Jesus Christ. Remember that, praise God. But allegation that my lady friend scared of me, that's false. Tell lies. You know, why they wanna skip and tell lies on the preacher? Something true, I'll let you know it's true. Been accused of kids. My job is to help protect kids, praise God. Look at me, I'm a man, an old man, a black man, understand? But I want to get this in your head, praise God. When I say be careful, be careful, my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, and I'm not putting no threat on nobody, praise God. I'm a real man of God. I sin like anybody else. I can sin before God for anything. I'm man enough to do it, and I hope y'all are men enough and women enough to do it yourself. But my lady friend, she, I think she throws something one in the police's faces, then he get cut. She locked up. $50,000 bond bill, I think, praise God. But the problem, I called down there in Monroe and told them she was having a baby during that time. So it struck me to do something, but like I say, the grandmama's supposed to do it, wasn't my job, but I did call, and I called social service. And I talked to Ms. Kelly today, and Ms. Keisha said it's up her grandmama to do it. But all the time my grandmama, I kept communicating with her, she didn't know where she was. And they took her all the way down there in Waysboro, and now she's down there in Almar. The people, you're messing up. I think y'all gonna be in my church, because God told me that, I was getting my money from the devil. But anyway, praise God, I know Mrs. Davis getting very tired. Hope Ms. Kelly can step in that job, because she's very consistent there, praise God. We got Brother Jack Lambert, he's running, praise God, seem to be real good. It's time for some changes, praise God. Mr. Furr, we thank God for you, Mr. Shu, and all the rest of you. But God bless you, and help a smile upon you and give you peace. Let you know Brother Jordan is on the warpath with peace. God bless you.
Okay, our next card is from Brian Echavaria.
Good evening. The Cabarrus County GOP gladly joins fellow Republicans to fight for justice for the unborn and the born in order to secure the blessings of liberty and freedom for all. We are committed to the values and ideals outlined in the North Carolina State Republican Party platform denouncing all forms of bigotry, racism, sexism, anti-Semitism, ethnic prejudice, and religious intolerance. We recognize God, not government, as the author of these principles and work together to provide true opportunity and hope for generations to come. Commissioner Wartman's resignation from the Republican Party is deceitful. Commissioner Wartman's decision to step away from the Republican Party and the principles that unite us is a betrayal of Republican voters who trusted he would represent their conservative interests once in office. Unfortunately, Commissioner Wartman has had a series of broken promises over the last year. He campaigned as a candidate against tax incentives with a promise to overhaul the outdated Cabarrus County Economic Development Grant process. Since his election, he has voted in favor of every tax incentive considered by the board without any action on reforming the grant process and leaving the entire community uncertain of his vote for a rumored 30% to 50% property tax increase. As a candidate, he was proud to have waged war against the Cabarrus County Republican School Board and championed the idea of new construction standards for functional schools instead of $100 million facilities. Yet, as an elected official, he voted for the county budget without advocating for any construction standards. Mr. Wartman claimed to be a conservative champion of a better, cheaper, and more transparent government with changes to the Cabarrus Events Center, Cabarrus Health Alliance, and more school choice, but again, he has put forth no effort in reforming any of these programs since being elected. Finally, on the campaign trail, Mr. Wartman declared he was a staunch conservative Republican and named President Donald Trump as his role model. Not even a year into office, he has walked away from the Republican Party and its principles of limited government and lower taxes. Republicans worked for and earned the seat of representation on the county commission, and yet now we're faced with what our founding fathers would have called no less than a turncoat. Commissioner Wartman's departure from the Republican Party is a display of ingratitude and deceit never before in Cabarrus County. As Mr. Wartman embraces his new political liberalism, we expect more tantrums and even less meaningful actions from him on the dais. Considering the difficulties Commissioner Wartman has with aligning with our conservative values, most Republican voters believe Wartman should consider stepping down from his seat in the best interest of the party, our community, and our voters. The Republican Party will remain steadfast in our commitment to strengthen and grow our local party. When a candidate places an R next to their name on the ballot, it is not simply a strategy to win, it is an indicator that they are aligned and committed to our party platform values and ideals. You said no one can contact you, and I respect your boundaries. I understand what despair looks like, and I know what it's like to be overwhelmed. If your video is true, be brave enough to resign for your family, because you've only been to one Republican meeting. God bless you. I want every good thing for you.
Okay, our next card is from Mark Spitzer.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I have great respect for each and every one of you. Each and every one of you has done wonderful things for this county, and as a commission, you've done wonderful things. I'm really pleased to be able to follow the last speaker. I don't have a prepared speech. You don't see one. What you see is me speaking from my heart. Kenny Wartman, I had the opportunity to get to know him when he was running. I didn't agree with everything he had to say, but he came and he listened. I've watched him over the course of his time in office to be someone who looks at the issues, listens carefully, and votes for the concerns of Cabarrus County and does so with a clear and principled heart. So I'm here with just a short comment. I won't take up the full three minutes, but I want to be very clear that those of us who consider it important to understand the issues, to dive into them, and to make a decision that is based on the best interests of Cabarrus County, we're all behind Kenny. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes all of the cards that I have for public comments tonight.
Chairman Morris, I would like to address public comment tonight.
Certainly.
Most people don't realize that we can address public comment. We are not the school board. We just typically choose not to because we don't ever want to deter anybody from showing up and speaking their mind. I see since the-- and I want to make this clear, that this is aimed at the executive committee of the Cabarrus County GOP and not the party itself. But since the executive committee of hate and hypocrisy decided to show up to make a statement, I figure I'll make one back. So I didn't see any resignation requests from our executive committee when you had a commissioner that was caught up here lying multiple times or changing your beloved Yellow Sheet several years ago for the party. However, what you did do was add that person to your executive committee, which speaks volumes of your actual morals and values. So your job as an executive committee is to grow the party, which apparently is failing miserably. September 23rd, 2023, according to Carolina Demography, 36% of the 7.3 million registered voters are registered unaffiliated, which makes them number one. 33% are registered Democrat, which makes them number two. 30% are registered Republican, which makes you last. I didn't do anything different than anybody that is around my age. So unaffiliated versus all voters. Ages 18 to 34, 35% of those voters are unaffiliated. Ages 35 to 54, 33% are unaffiliated, which I am 40 years old, so that is my age group. Ages 55 to 74, 25% of those are unaffiliated, and ages 75 plus, 7% are unaffiliated. That was as of last month. So instead of coming and writing strongly worded letters that accomplish absolutely nothing, which is the standard that you generally go with, maybe you should ask yourself what you're doing wrong and how to fix it. But instead, you're choosing to run us off. And the reason that is, is because you're not interested in a conversation, you're only interested in compliance. So the only difference is with me being an unaffiliated and a Republican, is I get to choose which ballot that I pull for a primary. Doesn't matter for a general election. The only difference with candidate is I have to get 2,000 signatures and then petition the Board of Elections to run as unaffiliated. But several of the comments apparently think you need to find somebody to run against me. Apparently didn't watch the video. I am not running again. You got four years. That's it. I will not run again. That was a promise I made to my wife, and that is a promise I intend to keep. So I don't understand why you gave your speech and you appear so mad. Last month, at a failed viral attempt at a school board meeting, I heard you ask, "Where are all the men at?" Where you found one. You found one that has a mouth and a spine who is not afraid to use it. I don't care if I sit up here, and I don't care if this has never been done, but the people voted for me because I have the guts to say what's on my mind. I'm gonna do it whether I'm down there or I'm up here. So a good man by the name of Lynn Shu, when I met, made sure to let me know that I might know 100 people, and I might be close to 50 of them, but I represent 240,000 people while I sit up here. And what's right for those 50 people that I might know might not always be what's right for the entire county. That's where my decisions come from. So here's what I'll ask that you do. Go home and pray, get some conviction and inspiration, and look in the mirror and ask, "Did I sell myself out as an individual to conform to what other people think that I should be?" Because I promise you, I did not sell myself out. So honestly, the comments are pretty underwhelming tonight. I was expecting a lot more. I honestly think your letter is nothing more than political garbage. That's what I think of your letter that you just read to me. That's the truth. I could care less what that letter says. So to answer you, no, I will not resign overwhelmingly, no. And I would like to remind you, according to your Republican platform, Article 3, Individual Liberty, Number 6, that says, "We disagree with all censorship of constitutionally protected free speech, including but not limited to all social media platforms." So with that said, I'll leave it in your lap, and let's see if I get my free speech like you had. Thank you.
Does the address card you get to answer? No, sir. That concludes our informal public comments, and we move now to Item E, which is our consent agenda. All of the items on our consent agenda are those of a routine nature that have been discussed in detail at our work session two weeks ago. I think we have 12 items on that list tonight. So commissioners, do I hear a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to new business, and in a very unusual situation, we do not have items of new business tonight. So we will now move to reports. I did want to mention one of the reports that was mentioned during our public comments, which was our Emergency Assistance Quarterly Report, which is included in our agenda. But I think to date, and this would be July through September, we have had 20 emergency assistance approvals. There, emergency assistance provided has been a total of, if I'm reading this correctly, And there is a bit of a description down here. The Emergency Assistance Program is designed to assist families' sporadic emergency needs. We have denied some applications mainly due to the clients not meeting the federal temporary assistance for needy families, referred to as TANF requirements, such as not having minor children in the home, not meeting income guidelines, not having a documented crisis, or not being able to maintain ongoing expenses. If I remember correctly, I think the total budget for that program, we had something over $100,000. $160,000. So there is significant amount of money still in that fund to be available to folks that meet the requirement between now and actually June the 30th. So first up on our reports is to receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards or committees. Does anyone have any updates?
The town of Midland did have the DOT and Duke Energy at their town hall meeting. They're desperately working to try to find a fix for that stretch of 24-27 that there's been several serious accidents on, so they are working towards that.
Thank you. Okay, any others?
Just briefly, on the Water and Shore Authority, construction is still underway. You know, we still on track, you know, to increase capacity for developments, and it's lightened up a little bit where the municipalities that had been turning down applications for subdivisions has lightened up a little bit. So we have got a little bit more breathing room, but it's not speeding the construction up any of those, but it's still going full steam ahead. Everything looks good on that part.
Great, thank you. Any other reports? Okay, I will mention, I do serve as the liaison to this board, to the Transportation Advisory Board. We met a few, I think about maybe last week, and we have discussed at some of our meetings before that we have had an ongoing problem getting enough employees to work in that transportation department. They were very happy to announce that for the first time in a couple of years, we are at 100% employment in that department. When I questioned, "What do you attribute that to?", the answer that I got back from staff was, "Without question, it was some of the signing bonuses that this board has approved and some of the pay adjustments." So that was very good news. It's nice to hear that, you know, when we try to implement something to remedy a problem when it works, and this one has worked. So we'll keep-- So we'll keep our fingers crossed that that will continue. And so if there are no other committee reports, I will open the floor for general comments by board members. And I will first ask our youth commissioner if you have anything you'd like to say. You're not required to. Just wanted to give you the opportunity if you wanted it.
We are funding our passion project, which is about nutrition, we're talking about education, and talking about how we can teach people.
Yeah, if you would push your microphone button there.
Teaching people around the county how to access cheaper in organic and fresh foods, and, or like have classes or different food opportunities around the county. That was basically our overview, and we're just planning that out and seeing different ways we can help people around the county. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other general comments? Okay, if there are none, we do have need of a closed session tonight. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, A35 and 6, to discuss pending litigation and acquisition of real property. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Need discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. We are now in closed session. Thank you again for everyone that joined us in person tonight, as well as those people watching online and on television.